Mr. Mayor, would you please make a call?
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, seeing as Barbara's gone, Darcy will do the roll call.
Rich Gordo.
Here.
Robert Bauer.
Here.
Steve Feldman.
Here.
Joe Muehlbauer.
Here.
Jared Pace.
All right, before approving, let's see, I want a motion tonight to approve tonight's agenda. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Mr. Gordo makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that one.
Mr. Gordo makes a second. All in favor say aye.
Mr. Mayor.
We're doing a consent agenda is next, right?
Correct. Are we adding something to the consent agenda tonight?
Yes, we will, to the consent agenda.
Okay.
This is on the agenda. So all in favor say aye to pass approval of the agenda?
Aye.
Aye?
Motion passes.
Moving on to consent agenda, we're going to add, there's one thing we're going to add to it. This is a text amendment for CUP, Initial Use Permit, to add QuickTrip to signature line. The overview is, QuickTrip has requested that they be added to the signature line for the conditional use permit on the property they have a purchase agreement with. And on request by Mr. Bauer, we're going to take out item C and item E on the consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda. Do I have that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Muehlbauer makes that motion. Do I have a second? I will make that second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes. Then we can go on to discussion at this particular point on those two items?
Correct.
Okay, we're going to pull out, item C is the Home Run Club Ice Rink Management Agreement, and then E is the Assistant Chief Declaration into Para Resolution 2017-35. I'll open up discussion on the Home Run Club.
Mr. Mayor, I was looking over the packet for the Home Run Club and the ice arena. And I think with, you know, with our higher water rates, stormwater fees that are, we're asking our residents to pay, I just kind of feel that the city needs to kind of stop spending like they have an open checkbook. So, that's the reason I wanted to pull this item off of the consent agenda and talk about how the city spends for that 51-day project.
Okay, so let me get this right now. You're at, you're, this is, and Paul, this has been going on. The ice rinks we maintain every year, whether it's been the Home Run Club that's done it for the last years, or our Public Works does it, right?
Mayor, Council, over the last several years, we've experimented with different things on how to operate our ice rinks efficiently while still being able to plow snow and getting that done in a timely manner as well. We did contract with a company called Gibson Management Service, which also at the time managed the Blaine Super Rink, I think they're called. And this has been a number of years ago, so the end result was, we didn't feel that we were getting a good quality ice. We had a lot of complaints. They were actually doing everything from making ice to shoveling and providing the rink attendants and everything else. We didn't feel the product that we got from them was good. We were approached by the Home Run Club. They came out, or they tried their first year. We thought it worked out quite well, with the one exception that we actually maintained the ice and flooded the rinks, so that we could ensure that the ice quality was what residents were used to. So, in doing so, we kind of split that task, looked at what we were paying Gibson for that year, kind of split it in two, and that's the number that we came up with for the fee that we pay the Home Run Club, which is a nonprofit organization. And it's, this is their major fundraiser for the entire fall season, so that they don't have to go out and, you know, do other sorts of fundraising. So, kind of the brief history of it. Not sure if I answered your question.
Well, Mr. Bauer, you know, what's your concern as far as like not doing the ice because of the water part of it?
I think it's spending the $7,000 in 51 days is what he's looking at.
Yeah, we're spending, we're asking the city to spend $7,373. I personally don't feel that the city is getting $144 a day that we're asking our residents to pay. We're not, we're not recouping the cost for this type of event.
Well, let me ask you, Paul, how much use do we get out of this? I mean, are there a lot of people that use these rinks?
We do see a lot of traffic at the rinks. They can get heavily used. I know we've talked about it in the past, of closing them, or trying to find a different way that this doesn't cost as much. The end result is, we do feel a lot of complaints when, when it's not open. If we do have unseasonably warm weather, and we're not able to get it open, we do feel complaints, people wondering why it's not open. As far as a daily count, I don't know those stats right offhand. I know we have taken them in the past. I can look for those records.
Well, how long have we been doing ice rinks?
The community has been doing ice rinks for a long, long time. I don't know when they weren't doing ice rinks. It's taught you may be getting there longer than I have.
As long as I can remember. I don't have a specific date either, but I moved up here in 1999, and they were doing ice rinks at that time. That's as far as back as I can recall.
Do we rent the ice-out tiny clubs, broom ball club type thing, or anything like that? It's just publicly open all the time?
It's publicly open all the time. I know prior to the meeting here, they did, there were times where they would close it, or they would have actual hockey organizations using the hockey rink. And we weren't recouping any money for that, but it was closed to public use, and I don't agree with that, because this is a public facility. It should be open for everybody, I don't think that, whenever the rink is open and staff. So, you know, the, the community, and I'm guessing at this one, I think in 2004, the community did receive a grant that helped pay for the warming house that exists there today. And again, that was a guess on that date, but I think it was approximately that time that, that's when that warming house was built.
Let me, at this time, I want to ask anybody in the public, have you got any input to your thoughts on an ice rink? And anybody in the public's viewpoint? Mike?
Mike Roger, 277237. I don't think taking away the ice rink is something we want to take away from our kids, because they really don't have a lot to do over here. I think the council, Mr. President, I think you guys should look outside the box and maybe approve it this year, but look for sponsorships that we can put, Kings County Market on the side of the boards, maybe True Value Ice Hardware on somewhere out there, and get some of the community businesses, maybe to donate funds, sponsorship, and paint their name on the boards, or something like they do at Swan Super Rink, to help offset the cost of it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
That's a good idea.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah, please. Step button.
Sarah Hunt, 23246 Kerry Street. Do we just not have the right equipment to maintain the ice rink? The city, does the city know the correct equipment?
Paul?
I guess I'm not.
Why can't the city do it themselves?
We do make the ice.
Right, you said that.
And we, we take care of the ice. We pay the Home Run Club to shovel the rinks and maintain the rinks during use, and keep the rinks clean. And then we also pay them to provide the staff to take care of the rink and the rink attendants. They're cleaning the bathrooms, taking care of the building, and then making sure that, you know, fights aren't breaking out, and things like that, on the rinks themselves, and that people are using them properly. We are not providing a part-time staff to do that. We don't go through the hiring process. We try that. That's how we used to do it. And facilitating part-time seasonal staff, making sure they show up on time, making sure they're there, became very, very difficult. And at those times, we'd close, because we didn't have staff there to manage or be a part of keeping that rink open.
So they caretake it, and we maintain the ice. We make the ice, we handle it.
They provide the.
And they do some concessions too, I understand, from whatever.
Yep, they have the opportunity to take and sell concessions if they want.
Have we talked to the Lions Club at all, either, about volunteering type of thing? I know Coonawapis did some things like that for a while when I lived down there and I was younger. Granted, the warming house attendants were not the greatest, I guess. We got in a lot of mischief back then, so, you know, I don't know if the Lions Club, I just a thought. I have no idea where that would go, but. I like the sponsorship idea. Mike, that's a good idea for next year anyways, but.
We can explore that.
Absolutely.
involvement by the city, huh?
The, the beauty of having an organization similar to the Lions Club is the Home Run Club. The Lions Club actually provides a lot of money to the Home Run Club as well, through their donation process. They, they pay for a lot of the different things that go up in the ball fields, and I believe that uniforms as well are purchased by the Lions Club, or part of their uniforms. So, having an organization that can come in and just turnkey operate, we, we give them the keys. If there's something that goes wrong, they let us know, but we really haven't had any issues. It's been a very, very smooth operation, and we're giving this money back to the community, essentially.
And like you said, they are not profit.
They are nonprofit. And again, we're not having to provide that staff to take care of the rinks at that time.
But I also agree with Mike, you know, on your statement about, you know, there isn't much for the kids to do up here. We don't have soccer events, like in Blaine, we don't have that type of thing up here. So, really, when you think about it, we're, we're limited on what we can do. So, I mean, you know, I've always thought about, you know, saving the value of a dollar, you know, it, it doesn't have to be in the form of a dollar. And I've said this to staff and council many times, it could be in the form of PR out there, and good, good, good community effort by, by just working together as a community. So, this is one of those things that actually comes out to promo dollars, basically, is my thought. Rich, what, what is your opinion?
I don't believe that one month before basic is the proper time to say, oh, we can't force that without.
Sure.
I do believe that it's something we could all get, with those sponsorship suggestions. This is something you've got to think about long ahead of ice rink time. There's probably some other things that are going to come up in the next months. We have finance committee, I don't know what the hell they do, but that ought to, you know, tempt someone's attention and we talked about it before, assign people to make decisions. I would think, let's not make a decision like this. You're absolutely right. You heard feedback during some of our complaining discussions, we want more things to do up here. Don't take this away from it. But if there's a better way to be, yeah, let's move into it. Let's not do it a month from opening day. I would recommend we proceed down this path, operate staff volunteering the ice rink with the Home Run Club. Let's put around the two new plus for next year, see if there's more cost-effective waiting decision to do this. I think if I would think I want to take away from the citizens.
I'd happen to agree with that. Like I said, just to defend the finance committee, there was other issues we were talking about, we could have brought up. But I will say to you that, that I happen to agree with this. I mean, we don't have a lot of outside activities for our, our kids and that, and it's something that should have been thought of earlier. I agree with that. But I, I love the sponsorship idea. That's something we should pursue for next year. But, but to answer, you know, Sarah, your, your question is, if we, if we have staff take care of that facility, then we take them, like Paul said, alluded to in the beginning, we take them with piling and stuff like that. That's our priority for Public Works, is probably to keep the streets clear and stuff like that, and items and area, things that they do. So, they maintain the ice, which is good, because we get a quality of ice, but the caretaking can't be, you have to hire a different crew to do that, on a temporary basis, is what you're saying.
Yes.
Have you tried seasonal work type of thing?
Yes, we have.
All right, Joe, you have anything else to say on this?
No, I happen to agree with you and Rich, as far as the, we do this now, and then obviously next year, we're looking for other options.
Yeah, I think, I think that's about the way to go. So, at that, at this particular point, I have to get a motion, I mean, okay. So, do I have a motion to accept the Home Run Club Ice Rink Management Agreement as is? Is there a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Muehlbauer makes that motion. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Mr. Gordo makes a second. Barring any further discussion, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes three to one. Moving on to your next one, Assistant Chief Declaration into Para Resolution 2017-35. Go ahead, Rob.
It's my understanding, with a little bit of background that I have from the fire department, isn't the Assistant Chief already in Para?
The Assistant Chief participates in the part-time firefighters' Para. This is a transition to the Police and Fire Fund. So, it's still run by the state, it's still part of the Para program. We're moving the Assistant Chief position from the part-time paid-on-call firefighter pension program into the Police and Fire Fund. Is a motion before you.
So basically, part-time or full-time?
And it's, the Police and Fire, Police and Fire Para Fund allows both part-time and full-time members of Police and Fire Departments participate. What has happened in the past year is, the Relief Association, which was a standalone retirement program for the firefighters, had joined up with the state. It's a relatively new created program, specifically for paid-on-call or volunteer firefighters to ensure solvency for retirement. What this change does for Chief Lawrence is it puts him into the Police and Fire Retirement Program, which is the same retirement program that I participate in. And the reason we're doing this move, or, or looking at to make this move, is it creates a retention and succession tool for the Assistant Chief's position. We hired somebody to maintain that position that's going to help grow and lead this fire department, and hopefully be the next person in line for the Fire Chief's position, if that ever creates an opening. We need to make sure that we're incentivizing and recruiting the right people for that position, and that's why we're making this move, is to incentivize and recruit and retain the proper person for the Assistant Chief's position.
All right, Rich, do you have anything to say on that?
No, I agree with it.
Joe?
I guess the question I would have is, financially, how does that affect the city?
So currently, we, as a department, as a city, contribute $500 to each firefighter to participate in their Para Retirement Fund as it is. I think the budget implication to move the Assistant Chief into the Police and Fire Fund is an additional $500, $1,000 a year, correct, Darcy? So it'd be an additional $500 per year. So when we look at that, it's, it's less than $100 a month to move him into the Police and Fighter Fund.
My thought, by the way, is you're asking a gentleman to go from firefighter to Assistant Chief, taking a more, more leadership role, which is why we, you know, went through the interview process that we did, to get the leadership that we've been striving, looking for. So, you know, with, with, with more responsibility should come a little bit of a, I don't know if we can call it perk or whatever, but some, some kind of plus side to that. So, he's taking more on and doing more, so I have no problem to myself. So, Rob, do you have anything else to say on it?
Well, I'll just reiterate to our residents that the city, again, cannot just keep doling out money for every project. So, we need to limit spending. He's already within Para, and this is a change that I don't agree with.
Well, you know, I just want to say this. I ran on the same idea with you about looking at the dollars and cents and this, but what I want to emphasize is this, you know, to be, to run lean and mean and not be effective is a waste, is just shoveling the dirtbag on you. You know, I mean, it's like, it's like, to me, saving dollars just for dollars and cents, just to save the dollars, without looking at the long-term effect of it, is, to me, is frugal, or, you know, futile, is a better word. To me, it's like, it's like I say again, you're asking, you want, 20 years we have in that decent leadership in the fire department, we finally now have the start of that to come for a long-term run, which is what we took six hours of interviewing for, and we elevated a gentleman to, brought in a fire chief, new one, and we elevated someone in the department to Assistant Chief. You're asking him to do more. I don't see that's really a lot that we're giving up to him. It's not as though we're giving him $500 a day, $500 more a month, to me, to get more out of, to make a department with great leadership.
Better a year.
A year, rather, thank you. But to me, to me, you know, just in general, being a small, a self-employed business person, you have to spend money to make money. And that's one of those examples here. You have to spend some money to make money. I'm all for cutting where we can cut, but this city's going through some growing pains right now. We have to spend some money to get to where we want to get. You can't, otherwise, we could just sit where we are in the past. And I'm not saying we should spend money on, on ridiculous items that I've heard of in the past when I sat out in the audience for two years. I'm not saying that. I think we're spending the money wisely, but we are, we're in the Y on the road, and to progress, to go forward, we're going to have to spend some money to get there. I hope the residents understand that, and we'll explain that to them. One thing this council believes in is, is for every question you have, we give an answer. I know in the past, when I sat out in that council, in that audience for two years, we didn't get a lot of answers. We've got a lot of questions, we never got answers. So now we're giving answers. I don't happen to agree with some of the small stuff and all that, but at the same time, I know it's important, because as you build up, you know, small here and small there, it all adds up. But like I say again, you're giving someone a tremendous amount of responsibility, being number two, and then you want to keep him here and give him incentive to stay here, you got to pay for that. So, I don't have any problem with that at this particular point in time. I think it's something you can reevaluate. But to me, to get the leadership that we need as fire department after all these years, that's a big plus, and it's worth that extra $500 a year, to me.
Mr. Mayor, can I?
Add to it if you want.
Over the first year of being city council, I've seen the city promote people in hopes that they get a boiler license, or whatever. And we promote them, we give them pay raises before they can even pass the test. We promote people, now we're giving them pay raises before they can even perform. We're doling out cash, our residents' money, before we even get performance. I can't say it enough. We have to start getting the dollars down for our residents with the spending.
All right, on that one subject there, Paul, when we, when Parrish got his license, was he being paid more before he got his license, or not? Do you know that?
Parrish's pay did not change based on his license.
So his Class A license he got, now to run the wayshare to a study, but his pay did not change? I want to make that clear. Okay. Your points are well taken. At the same time, like I say again, we are, we are the guardians of the taxpayers' money, and I understand that. But at the same time, I mean, we are here to do the best we can for the city, and at the same time, we have to give some incentive out here. And, and I think that, again, you're talking $500 extra a year, which comes about $40 some dollars a month more to get someone a second, a second seat to achieve a leadership that we need in a department that has failed in that, that regard for a long, long, long time. So to me, it's money well spent. So, on that, I will take a motion to approve Assistant Chief Declaration into Para Resolution 2017-35. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that.
Mr. Gordo makes that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Muehlbauer makes that second. Any further discussion? Barring any, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Nate?
Opposed.
Nate. Motion passes three to one. Thank you for helping bring that out. Moving on to, meeting open to the public. Do we have any votes? Sure, that's it, that's it.
All right. Sarah Hunt, 23246 Kerry Street, Marthless. I have something to say about this fire department issue. I remember when it got switched over to Para, when that was a big discussion of the firefighters switching over to Para, how angry the residents were that we were asking for that $500 more for each firefighter. So for you to just say, oh yeah, it's no big deal, just another $500, you have forgotten how angry the residents were when it got switched over in the first place. And the second question is, is, does Chief One and Chief Two, do they live in town? Are they residents of this community?
Chief Two does.
That's great, but doesn't he also make more money than the other firefighters?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Well, there's his benefit. He knew coming in here exactly what he was getting when he applied for the job. He knew what he was getting when he came to the city. And then for all of a sudden, now he's in it, and they're just like, okay, let's give him more benefits and more money. Ridiculous. Absolutely ridiculous. Thank you.
You know, I do remember that fight, and Rob pretty much led that fight on the Para. Okay, and he wanted that, and you weren't getting the right equal pay on the Para, right? Am I incorrect on that? So you fought to get that.
Yes.
One of the pillars why every municipal city council.
So let me ask you this, Dave.
Yes, sir.
The pay that he's getting, how much, you know, is that a large amount more pay than a regular firefighter?
So the Assistant Chief is getting paid a monthly salary of $400, plus call pay and training pay. That's what was voted on and approved by council during the hiring process. I, I would, I would advise, firefighters in this town make $12 an hour per call, per hour, with zero other benefit other than their Para. They're running into burning buildings, they're doing CPR on our, on our community members, they're working in the roadways, they're taking on an insurmountable amount of risk, because they love this community. They're vested in this community. I'm vested in this community, regardless of what my mailing address is. We are here to help this community and help each other. I think the ask before you tonight, I understand $500 is real money, right? It's real taxpayer dollars, and we're trying to make good decisions based on value. And I think that this is a good decision based on value.
We really think you asked for more money for your firefighters first.
And we're working on that, too.
And I know that this training book that's in this packet tonight, you brought that, you put that together yourself, with no chance of the city.
Correct. So, we'll, we'll get to that part of the agenda, but that was not purely my work ethic. We're making investment back in the staff and empowering them to make this organization what we all believe it can be, and that's been part of that process as well.
All right, let me ask you this then, just one side note to this, is like, how is this compared to other cities, how they do it?
As far as pay, or Para?
For number one and number two?
So, most communities outside of St. Francis, if you go any further south of here, with the exception of Oak Grove, Andover has a full-time chief and a couple of full-time assistant chiefs. East Bethel has a full-time chief and part-time assistant chief. Typically, that Para kicks in when you start looking at number of hours worked. So 20 hours a week on average is typically when we start looking at that Para aspect. The other side of that is, and, and Councilmember Bauer can, can probably speak a little bit more intelligently than I can, and probably one of the changes that led us to make the change to go to the Para system for the part-time firefighters, is if you look collectively at what other firefighters and fire departments get for retirement, the city of St. Francis was falling short for a number of years, right? So, we're trying to do this one step at a time. We're trying to evaluate the return on the investment with every choice and decision that we make, that we bring forward to council. I feel like we've taken the time to vet this one appropriately. We are going to continue to try and move this thing along. We're operating a fire department on a, on a very small budget right now, and in order for the department to grow in capacity and capability, we need to make some adjustments as we go along. But we need to make sure that we're vetting those, and that we're creating the investment that the community expects from us as an organization. I'm very aware that that's the number one pillar for this community, is that we're doing things that make sense, that have value. And I feel that that's where we're working towards every day.
You know, I want to add something onto that, about running lean and mean. For years, this city has been running lean and mean. It's one thing to save money, but that lean and mean has caused us to be, it's not, we're playing catch-up now. We're spending money that should have been done years ago in the proper format. If we'd have done, planned ahead for this, we wouldn't be dealing with the issues we are now. Instead of looking forward, we're dealing with the issues from past councils that have not been done. So, I know, I've read enough packets to know how, how the movement was in the city, and I think in the city. Lean and mean, if you can, if, if it takes 10 people to do a job in a, in a city administration, and you only have six doing it, are you getting done the, the results that you need? I don't believe you are. And so therefore, you, you know, if it takes nine people, nine players on a team to play baseball, that's what it takes. So I guess what I'm saying to you is, you know, if you're not, you're not, you're not play baseball, that's what it takes. So I guess what I'm saying to you is, lean and mean is fine as long as you're effective. Lean and mean is not fine if you're not effective and you're burning the people you have and you're not catching up with what needs to be done. The city is in that position where it's starting to do some of the things that needs to get done, but it's gonna cost us somebody to do that. I understand your concern about five hundred dollars a year, but five hundred dollars a year is not gonna make or break the city. If it does, we have other issues to deal with, big time. That's not one of these issues. So at this particular point in time, I understand your concern, I appreciate you bringing it up, but once again, this lean and mean thinking is fine and dandy as long as you're effective. If you're not effective, lean and mean is a waste of time, it only burns us and works against us, not for us. Just my thought. So that's...
It's about an extra forty-two dollars a month.
Honorable Mayor, can I just add something?
Please.
Just for, to clear the record.
Please.
Dave did have a proposal tonight on the agenda slated to come to increase firefighters' pay as well. I pulled it off because there was a number of pers, or policy changes in that. It wasn't just that change, and just to give us more time to review it, I said we'll hold off on that particular item. So that was supposed to be a package deal, and so if the paint, the picture's getting painted here that Dave is just looking out for his assistant chief or the officers, that's not true. All firefighters were supposed to be talked about tonight, but we just didn't have enough time to review all the policy changes.
All right, great, I'll relate to that.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you very much for that. But, uh, once again, uh, this is, uh, this leadership change in the fire department is a big plus, and, you know, it took this council, and it worked us in six hours to pick the right person for that first seat, and, and I think he picked the right person for the second seat. So let's give it some time to see where it goes, and, uh, I appreciate what you're doing. So I appreciate all the input all the way around. Thank you for that, Joe. All right, moving on to, uh, no other further business than public hearing, I think?
Public hearing.
Okay, all right. Moving on to public hearings, and public hearing certifying assessments for delinquent utilities, miscellaneous invoices, administrative fines, Resolution 2017 dash thirty-six, I open a public hearing for that?
Correct.
So I'll open the public hearing up at six-thirty-one. Anyone? Please come forward.
Sarah, eight-three-seven-zero-nine-two-twenty-ninth, Main Northwest. Um, some people have some questions about, um, the delinquent utilities. Um, I'm assuming that, that there could be delinquent, um, utility bills from previous owners, is that a possibility, or do we know that these are for sure the people who are residing in these homes that have the delinquent bills?
Um, Mayor and Council, utility bills do stay with the property, so if by chance it didn't get paid in closing, which the title companies are supposed to call and find out the, what's owed on the utility bill, or email me, um, it might be, but I, I don't, that doesn't happen very often.
What about a rental unit?
A rental unit? It go, it stays with the property?
So it stays with whatever?
It does not, yes, it does not go with, in Minnesota...
So if you move into an apartment or a townhome, you need to first check to make sure that utility bill, otherwise you're gonna get stuck with that?
Um, if you rent it, no. It's always with the owner at that point. It doesn't stay with the person, like, the person renting it, it can then go to the owner.
Okay, but a homeowner, if they didn't, if they didn't, if they didn't get taken care of in the closing or whatever, that they, that the mortgage company would...
And at that point, they can go back to the title company and say, hey, you didn't check on this bill, why didn't this get paid in closing? And they are, they are supposed to do a process where they call and they, they ask for any bills outstanding on the property from us.
Okay, he, I appreciate that one.
Any other input from the public on this? Um, I'm gonna open it up for discussion here. I wanna, I wanna clarify something here on, on these, uh, assessment. This, this is, uh, to be paid, the one-year assessment, so it'll be paid by December thirty-first of two thousand eighteen.
It's added to the property.
Yes, Mayor and Council, it's a one-year assessment, so it always due next year, and next year's property taxes, so when they split it between the first half and the second half.
And this is pretty much all just the MS four that wasn't paid?
No.
I know, there's utility bills, and there's stormwater bills, and there's some miscellaneous which are escrows and mowing, and, um, some admin citations. And all of this, some of these can change based on payments that we're receiving yet, like today and up until, um, even Thursday. We can still take some payments and...
So let me ask you this then, what, and this would be like, go safe, so say for instance, there was a thousand dollar assessment, just for example, okay, and, and their property taxes were two thousand dollars normal. So let's say they have a thousand dollar assessment, so you're saying that this would be divided basically, uh, so it'd be like fifteen hundred dollars twice, that they'd have to pay that off on December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen?
Yep.
Okay, so if they don't pay it, what happens then?
Well, it's delinquent on their tax bill, and so then it goes into the delinquency there. And what happens is the escrow companies, taking care of their escrow, is gonna get their tax statement. They're gonna look at it and say, hey, wait a minute, you're not putting enough into your escrow, we need to up your escrow, so that's where they'll, they'll actually see that cost, is your monthly payment will go up because your escrow goes up.
So was there, was there notification sent out to everybody on this list that they all knew this was coming about, or?
Yep, they all get, they all get a letter, um, in September. I, they, the utility bill company actually does the utility billing, uh, letters for us. We also, I also go through that list and make sure if there's any renters on there, and somebody like a different owner, the owner will get it for the renter because it's gonna go on their property. And so they have more than thirty days' notice before the actual hearing. So...
All right, Jody, have anything to say about this?
No, I was just a little confused by the different, uh, brackets here.
Okay, now, Rob?
Makes sense.
Mr. Mayor, I, I just wanna, uh, employ the residents. Um, I looked through this list, and there's a lot of stormwater fee, um, assessments here. Um, this is something that the stormwater fee was designed to, um, bill, this is the way that previous council decided to create this fund. Um, I employ you, it's something that's gotta get paid. I, I paid mine, I'd rather pay sixty than sixty-six dollars. Um, so I just employ the residents, pay the stormwater fee this year and, and in many years to come, rather than paying sixty-six dollars a year, and hopefully in the next couple of years, we can think of, uh, a different way to fund this. But don't give the, the state, the city, six more dollars, get your, uh, stormwater fees paid.
Are you, remember Rob just said, right? Every time I see this list every year, granted, I'm like, you're a little, hey, it's a lot of problems. If you remember off the top of your head, I thought last year might have been, maybe six percent compliance with the stormwater, or maybe forty percent.
We're running...
But to, through this process, number of entries in this spreadsheet, that's a lot.
That's a lot.
We're running probably about the same on this, the stormwater as last year.
Well, I agree with you, Rob, we, 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 we need to pay it, we need to fund, I don't know, not everybody agrees with it, but, but then again, for an extra six bucks, you don't have to remember to, this is almost kind of like our version of putting it on property taxes, and they don't ever see it. It's free, an extra six dollars, you have the full cost taken out of the process. I think that's kind of expensive, but maybe some people look at it that way.
Well, the purpose of doing the, the mailouts, from what I understand, too, is because they wanted to be transparent, not just hide it in the taxes type of thing, but it's state mandated, and so it, you know, it wasn't necessarily the council that had to do it, it was the state that mandated.
Right, and I just want to say also that I, I've had some people call that we actually wanted honor taxes.
See, that's why I... Just takes, I feel like, I just paid a hundred dollars in penalty for my property taxes, and then I'm gonna go buy escrow, and on October first, I said, no, hey, I gotta do that, but I had two weeks to do that. Well, I just remember a couple days ago. So if you could, you know, the more automatic things can be nowadays, the easier it is. But this is just one way for it. In this case, it's been the automatic, but it costs ten percent, and I have to make a total of, it's...
Well, and also let you know, when we, when I tried to get it on the property tax, tried to change it over, because we had some, I had some requests from residents to do that, the difference would be that that would be increased, you know, would be based on appraised value, so that, that would be uneven. It wouldn't be just a sixty-dollar flat fee, it would go on your appraised value of your house. So the more your house costs or your more your business is, the more you pay beyond the sixty dollars.
It's not just a sixty-dollar flat fee, all parcels.
Yeah.
So it's not just a sixty-dollar flat fee for everybody?
Somebody that owns a lot of acreage and has multiple parcels pays per parcel.
Right, per parcel, sixty dollars per parcel. So if you have ten parcels, it's six hundred dollars. I know, I've talked to some people about that already. Um, you know, we've looked into tax exempting the agricultural parts, we've looked at, we've looked at, uh, putting this on the tax rolls, again, based on appraised value, so that's not fair. I mean, it came down from a state, I've explained it more than once, it affects two-hundred-sixty-four cities throughout the state. You know, we, we, uh, we discharge into the outstanding resource value water, which is the Rum River, that's our curse, and therefore that's why we have to pay this. Uh, whether I agree with it or not, it's state mandated down to the county, down to us, so it's like, would I like to come out and fight to them? Then, yeah, I would, I've tried where I can, but I can't seem to get a response either from the assessors, I can't get a response from, you know, some people want our taxes, but then some people don't, because again, it's based on appraised value. So what you're saying, Liz, is true, based on parcel, but it's a flat fee per parcel. The more parcels you have, of course, the more you'll pay. But if you go by appraised value, then it goes by the appraised value of that land or that building structure. So if you have, uh, something at two-hundred-thousand dollars value, it's gonna be different than somebody at a five-hundred-thousand dollar value, and so on and so forth. That's why it didn't seem to be a fair way to do it at that level. So, um, is there a win-win on this? The only thing I can say is, it's sixty dollars a year, five bucks a month. That's the best I can say about it. Go ahead, Mike.
Mr. Mayor, I, I'm a little confused. You said two-hundred-sixty-four cities in the state.
That are affected by...
Why, why are we one of them?
Because we, we...
Get the rum.
Populations of ten thousand or five thousand minimum that discharge into an outstanding resource value water, we discharge into the Rum River with Sealy Brook, that's what we do.
Is there, is there a standard, maybe Paul can answer this, is there a standard on that water that's being discharged into the Rum, is why we're paying it? And what I'm getting at is, maybe this new wastewater treatment plant helps us there where we're discharging cleaner water into that Rum where we can get away from that fee?
No, uh, the long shot of it is they're, they're two different waters. This is a stormwater runoff, and what we're talking about with the wastewater treatment plant is our, our, our wastewater, um, from our sanitary sewer collection system, from that effluent from that, um, is a different water. Two separate systems.
Where now and then doesn't do that, they don't have to pay the stormwater, and then East Bethel, I don't, they pay it because they don't discharge any outstanding resource. They have a new experimental procedure they're doing there with their new plant. They have a chemical breakdown that they do for their discharge, they don't do a, they don't discharge to an outstanding resource value in East Bethel.
Two, two separate waters again. Um, stormwater, the MS four is stormwater, has nothing to do with the wastewater or sanitary sewer.
So you're saying it's our stormwater that's discharging the outstanding resource value water is why we're doing this?
That's right.
Okay, all right, I guess I misunderstood that, too. So it has nothing to do with the WWTF? It has to do just simply our, our stormwater goes into the Rum River?
Yes.
If that's the case, then why wasn't it done years ago?
The state just mandated it?
Just mandated it last year, I believe it was. Two years ago?
At the time.
Fifteen and a...
Well, yeah, I'll call you, correct me, it's been around for a while, but we just finally reached the threshold for population lines, and that's what pushes it to the edge.
Oh, that's right, yeah. Five thousand, right, your average, five thousand minimum, or, you have ten thousand with no discharge, or at least five thousand with a discharge. That's how it works, right. So we finally got to the criteria. All right. All right, uh, you know, I, I have to say to you that, that looking at this list is, it bugs me because I don't want to do this, but at the same time, I know it has to be done. Um, I, I don't understand why people let this go, because the longer you let it go, the worse it gets, it doesn't get better. I mean, I, I know there's financial headaches and, and burdens for other people, but looking at this list, I mean, it's, it's incredible to me, uh, the dollar was, uh, I don't want to do this, but at the same time, I know it has to be done, so, um, any further discussion on this at all?
Mr. Mayor?
Can we close the public hearing?
Yep. Okay, all right. All right, let's, any, any further in the public hearing at all? All right, well, on that, I will close this at, uh, let's see, six forty-four. And, uh, barring any further discussion, I guess I'll take a motion to, uh, approve certifying assessment for delinquent utilities, miscellaneous invoices, and administrative fines, Resolution 2017 dash thirty-six. I have a motion to approve Resolution 2017 dash thirty-six, it stands.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Bauer makes that motion, do I have a second?
I will second.
Mr. Squirtle makes that second. No further discussion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. All right, moving on to whole business, this is the assessing contract part that we're gonna talk about now. Um, so I don't see anybody here, I see Eric here, I don't see anybody from the county, but I can see all this, I know. Okay, all right. So Eric, why don't you come to the podium, and see if we can have some discussion on this?
First of all, thank you for having me here, just having this done. Uh, you know, we'll cover everything that we covered before, you know, going up, it's time to call it, but, uh, just to kind of clarify, uh, a proposal I did before you, uh, for the last meeting, I sent out and I resent it again, but, uh, you know, the first part, obviously, there's, there's cost savings, there goes a lot to be a private contractor versus having some from the county. Uh, so that's roughly all, you know, the dollars. Uh, but on top of that, you know, it's not just the, the benefit, you know, perfect discussion document, I love value for cost. You know, as, as a local assessor, I've been doing this for twelve years, and, you know, I pride myself in doing a high-quality job, I've actually taken over areas that have been poor quality work in order to do this, to clean things up. And so I, I really pride myself on it, being fair and equitable with everybody, you know, uh, when, you know, with their value, everybody says, you know, it's just your taxes that we're talking about, and, you know, and it's just unfortunate it is. Uh, but my job is to try to follow the market, whatever's going on in town, and be fair, and that kind of spreads the word around to everybody. And I feel like I've done a pretty darn good job of that, you know, I didn't get some references and whatnot, I know that had been called on, so I kind of wanted to make sure that there wasn't any concerns there. Uh, but on top of that, you know, I, I want to provide a local service to you guys as well, not just, I'm gonna come in here and do a job when you're done. You know, and, and some people, when they're dealing with the city, this might be their only contact, you know, like maybe come under their door and talk to them, and just explain the process and, and all these other things that come along with their value and their taxes, and then stormwater fee, but it's, you know, I can deal with a lot of those types of questions from folks, and it's a good time to interact with them, kind of on their terms. Uh, so that's something I like to do, you know, and I think it's important for people who would get positive experience as much as they can of talking to the assessors, so, um, that's, that's part of it, but, you know, everything from, like I said, if there's a city newsletter, or, or you guys do summer festival or whatever, you know, we, we're more than happy to put articles in, or just come and have a booth, and just kind of explain to people a little bit what's going on in life. So, um, cost savings is part of it, but, you know, really to me, it's more just trying to provide the products for a focus. I'm a taxpayer, too, and before I did this, you know, it's one of those things I didn't understand everything, so I try to meet people at whatever level they have, whether it's, you know, a local, local person at their door, you know, with tax attorneys or, or whatever, you know. Um, and on top of that, just to clarify, you know, the, the contract that I have proposed to you, the, there is no extra fees, there are no extra things for, for appraisers. Um, I know Alex was here last time at the county assessor discussing that example, excuse me, in Lane, um, where they had to have an appraisal done in North Townville, you know, and that was something they covered. Anything that's tax car related thing, it's my responsibility as a local, whether I'm a contractor, I'm a county, whether I'm a staff employee, um, to be able to handle that, to deal with those folks, if I have to have an appraisal either done by an outsider or myself, that's my responsibility to do. And I work with the county attorney's office on those things. And, you know, there's no extra bill to cost to the city. The only thing I think key to reference is if there is a, you know, some reason something is not done to his satisfaction, if you give a notice and whatnot, the county could potentially go back and rebuild something. Uh, you know, I've never had that happen in any place I've worked, you know, whenever I'm working with the cities and the counties, I try to have a good positive relationship with them. You know, we're working together to try to do something, you know, I, I have my portion of it, and they have their portion of it. And, uh, in Andover County, everything goes back and forth, we, we have email communications, usually monthly meetings, all that type of stuff to make sure everybody's trying to be fair, to work with each other, to get the job done. So, I guess that's kind of all I have, but if you have specific questions or anything else, you know, I'm here for this.
Well, uh, I'll start off here. You know, one of the things that bothers me, I mean, I, I, a five-year contract bothers me because it's a lot, you know, we're setting this up for five years, but it's a two-year, from what I understand, it's a two-year notice to terminate. So what I'm at, what I want to know is, is it possible to make it a, a one-year terminate, you know, to look at it? Because it's the only thing for us too, by the way. But correct me, Joe, we've been with county for how long on this assessment?
Quite some time.
Quite some time, okay. So, uh, you know, and seeing as we're talking about saving dollars, but again, effectiveness is the key there, and our savings, but, in my opinion, but. You know, is it possible that we could do a, let's say, a three-year contract, and then with a one-year buyout, or terminate, rather, to see how this turns out, I mean, to give us some kind of, uh, because I, and then, and then I just want to know also, um, and that, I like seeing this fact that the county could backfill us, that, that to me just doesn't make sense to me, that they could backfill. I don't know, you say they've never done that, but they can. You know, it seems like if they're doing something and they put a string to it, you're not giving me something. So it's, it's like, uh, and then also, um, um, I would hope that this would not affect other programs that we do at the county, because the county needs us, and we need the county, so it works together, as you stated before. So, uh, I'm wondering about, about, uh, again, a term can be, if it can be less than the three years, with a one-year termination clause, if necessary. I like that, better than two-year, five-year, so. Do you see a problem with that yourself?
No, and I'll be honest with you, at least as far as that goes, the reason I have it in there is because, like I said, I try to mirror the counties as much as possible, so it's less of a transition. They do a five-year contract, um, I do five-year contracts in some places, um, but in other places, they do three years. I've done two years, but, you know, if someone would like to be there. You know, the difference, and not that I do this, but it locks costs in one way or the other, you know, so if you give me for this cost for five years, you give me for one year. But I completely understand where you're coming from. So, like I said, I've done it in other places, three years to me isn't an issue. Uh, as far as the termination goes, I think the way I have it set up in there is, I have it a year, but it's a year prior to the start. So for example, right now, if, you know, say it's after the first of the year, we're going to be working on the two thousand and, um, nineteen assessment, which takes place January second of two thousand and nineteen. I would have to start the work, technically, it would be the beginning of two thousand eighteen. So the way I have it set up in there is it's one year prior to the start of the contract. So it gives, you know, I mean, I, I don't have a problem if you went to six, I just don't want to do a year because then all of a sudden, you know, December twenty, whatever your last meeting is, it could be, okay, we're not doing it, and then both me or the county or whoever is like a week later, and then all of a sudden, somebody's stuck with something. So that's kind of, I guess, the way I put it in there, but.
That makes sense, that makes sense, I can understand that.
So, yeah, and then, except the bill back portion, I know they've never done that, but, you know, the way it is, is they have to have pretty understanding circumstances and proof that things aren't getting done the way that they're supposed to be getting done. So, yeah, I, I very rarely heard that, I've heard of that in some locations where counties have done that, and that's when, you know, somebody just doesn't turn their record in, or just doesn't do the work, or, or whatever. But again, you know, that's, that's something that I, you know, I have a reputation to hold, I do this other places, and this isn't something that I, I pay lightly. So, as, as much as trying to isolate the cost I can, that's why I have it set up in there, that any court things or whatever, you guys are billed for what you're billed for, you know, I can't charge you anything more on top of that.
Okay, so Lee, so one of the other questions I have was the legal part of it, you're saying that comes down to, on your side, if it's your fault or something like that, you're responsible for that.
Well, if it's, if it's something, I don't want to say fault, but basically what it is, is if, if for some reason there's, you know, a clerical error, or something I, I mess up, that's, you know, it, it, if, there's really not a lot of recourse for taxpayers to come back and get their taxes reduced. There, there's tax court is basically the option, there's a small chance, option for them to do that. So, any of that would come out of their, dealing with their value or classification of their property. So if I was wrong on their classification, or they went to court, or we set, you know, settled on something, and say there was a reduction in their taxes or the prior year taxes, that's something that comes proportionally from every taxing authority that's part of that. So with a tax court settlement, if they, you know, if they have, uh, let's just say, a thousand dollars or something like that, whatever portion of that would have been your part of four hundred or something, would come out of the city, you would have to pay that back. But that's no different for me, or for the county, or anything like that, that kind of is all around that way. So there's no, because other than like the, the bill back, like you mentioned, for me not doing my work after being repeatedly beat over the head by the county saying, hey, you're not doing your job, and they have to step in and do it, that's the only difference from what, you know, the county would charge versus, versus me. So, and again, I've never had that happen, and I, I don't ever plan on having that happen, so.
Number eleven of your contract, basically, with the hold harmless, it's, from what I understand, that's basically telling us that you're accepting responsibility for anything, as far as if we get billed by the county, that would be your responsibility.
Which that, you know, that is correct as well, so, I mean, I, I couldn't go back to you. If, if I don't perform my duties or failure to act within the form, my obligations present to this agreement, I will identify hold harmless in this penalty or offense if it is in the eligible. So, you know, it's, I guess it depends, if the county did that and billed it back, you would have some recourse on it in turn, so. I don't know how these things stick so well, but, you know, whatever, that's, there is something that's where I did that, it does mention that, so.
And you abide by that?
Correct, definitely. Like I said, I don't plan on doing anything different than how I, how I put it, the only reason you're going to change or enforce this contract is if your city grows. Or if, you know, I have cities that do that too. But it's not like that's your biggest issue, so.
Joe, anything for you?
No.
Rob? Well, I have page fifty-seven that shows your billing, I don't know if that's clerical error in the city, or, um, but page fifty-seven shows the, the county at forty thousand five hundred and thirty, and you're at forty-one eight fourteen, which is more.
Century Vision.
That was, yeah, that was based on that originally.
And, and we, and we want that in writing, oh, too, but.
Yes, definitely. I had, I knew a copy of that, ran out of time as well today, but that's what I had sent prior to thirteen, fifteen, or sixteen, you know, sixteen.
So with that being said, I'm, I'm all for, you know, small businesses, um, company, and, and my understanding of the assessing process is once you assess it, the county has to do a look see anyway. So, we're benefiting from the cost savings from, for a five-year contract. And anything that the county picks up on that may be a clerical error, we're, we're knocking out two birds with one stone. We're getting the county for free, and we're, and we're saving money, and we're promoting small businesses within the city of Saint Francis. I'm all for this. I appreciate you coming in and, uh, and making this presentation.
Rich?
I guess when we left last time, we talked about, uh, references or, as you said, you were talking to the East's speaker, so I'm going to give you feedback. I don't see any artifact appeared to tell me anything about that, it's basically the same pack that I saw off the.
Did I contact everyone, ever heard of anything?
I did, there was some issues. Okay. Now, and I still get a little bit of the reword. We just got done having a discussion about trying to provide a service to a local neighborhood, community contracts with the county, but one of the things in struggle is how you treat the county. I'm here for talking about somebody's coming in, think that they can beat the county's service by twenty percent in pricing. You can do it great, the five-year thing scares me a little bit. I'd rather, if you could, I would rather we did this on a shorter term. I guess, is this, did we have, people bid to, I guess, run on this? If we don't like the five-year, we might do the three-year, because that can mean the process has to start over again, we have to give the county a chance to give a proposal based on a, a three-year, or they just took proposals that two entities gave us, and they just have them for five years, because like he said, you hear the county do. If we didn't like that, does that set the process back, and we don't have too much time to mess around with this?
There, running a little short on time, we have to accommodate the process. It's one thing I personally didn't like, the paper that the county put their bid in, uh, and then they also got a bid from another, as well, and then verbally we came up and made them change your bid, and here we are, still in there, but, I guess I just add that right here, but it, it's been the nature of this whole process.
And that's what makes me nervous too, I mean, I still don't have, like you said, it's like we have the one in writing, it's a draw, like, uh, the one.
But that's the exact same one I sent prior to the last meeting, once I saw it in the council packet, so, I mean, that's the one you had for over two weeks.
You know, you know, and, and what Rich says here, I mean, let me ask you something, I mean, you know, the amount that you took off was because that was, uh, that was tax exempt property that the, the, the county wasn't doing, right, agricultural land wasn't doing? So why did you have that on your numbers first and then take it off? I don't understand that. If you're mir, if you're mirroring the county, why just mirror them all the way?
I was basing a contract they had had, that I had in hand, I think, ten years ago, which they might, they may be going to change it for a grant defense. So what I had was to get, try to have the language based on what was there. So, their current contract, I don't think they maybe charged for exempt is what it was, and, and, I mean, I've never charged for exempt either, but that was, you know, simply the, what they had had in the old contract, so that's what I had used, um, like two thousand ten, I think, was the last one.
Well, you should have put your best foot forward.
Well, there you go. But, uh, anyway, that, as I said, firmly gave all of the intention based on the bid and something like that, so.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I guess, could I, um, if, if I could give a recommendation on how we proceed forward? I would like to put this behind us once and for all, but I, like I said, I don't like the five-year, I would like the three-year. I would maybe perhaps like to see whoever wants this work to come back to our next meeting with a signed proposal, with the no grab numbers on it for three years, and be done.
I, I will add on that, that I did reach out to the city manager at Coon Rapids today, uh, who you had worked for. Mary and yourself did work for that department, and you went on your own. You couldn't, you couldn't talk about, uh, your work as far as on your own, your own business, but he gave you high, high recommendations as far as your work ethics and what you did for City of Coon Rapids, if I can say that much here, and I know that you have something to say here, so.
Yeah, I reached out to East Bethel as well and talked to them, because I know they contract out, and talked to them about how the county handles things, what kind of issues they had. They said they had no issues, um, for the last six years, as far as the guy's been the administrator there, uh, Jack over there, and never had any problems with the bill back, and, and I think that that, I'm a little disappointed, I, I kind of feel like that's a scare tactic to try to get us to, to go with the county, and, um, you know, I, I personally don't appreciate it, I was kind of offended by that, that tactic.
I have been agree with that myself. I don't, I don't like, I don't like the fact that this backfilling is like you do something for us, then you attach a string to it, now that if we don't go with you, you can come back at us, that kind of thing like that. I don't like that, and, um, like I say again, if, if it's going to affect other services that we're dealing with, uh, I know I'm not going to be very happy with that, and I'll be talking to somebody in the county about that if it happens. I mean, we have other things we do at the county, so if one thing, it, it's not right to say that if we don't do assessing with them, if they're going to affect our HRA with them and other things we do with them, that's totally.
They should be a professional organization.
That's right, and any of us, the rest of the meeting, so. I, at this particular time, um, would like to do the motion the way that Rich stated it. We will put this on for the November twentieth meeting, okay? On that, you will come back with everything dotted, eyed, cross-tied, signed up on the amounts that the way they're supposed to be, on a three-year contract, with a two-year out, two, uh, two-year, uh, uh, out clause in it. Okay, I understand what you're saying on that, and I happen to agree with that, it's because of the time they's got to do that. Let's see, oh, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, can I speak on, on, on the three-year thing? If the county bills out on a five-year plan, and we backfill because we're anticipating some hiccups on a three-year plan, that leaves us two years vulnerable with the county to come in and give us, you know, their own cycle for two years, because now we're out of their cycle.
Still taking.
I, I like the five-year cycle, we stay right with the county, we do have an out clause, um, I do like to, technically, it's a one-year out clause, but we'll call it two. And then we just stay with, with the billing cycle of the county, we're not having any headache, um, redoing our contract. Now we're going to do another three years, now we're two or three years outside of the county's contract. We just stay with the same five-year contract that the county does every year, and we just stay in line and try, and we're trying to set all these precautions to.
Well, I, I think with your concern, I understand where you're coming from with the two-year gap there. But for one, I think that if, let's say we decided to not go with Eric after three years, three years, he's been to every house, um, you know, you have that timeframe, I think it's every.
It's, it's a five-year cycle, I don't know, maybe part of the reason, but every year, about twenty percent roughly, every three years. So, kind of gives you one shot through the city in a five-year.
And, uh, I know East Bethel does a three-year contract, and, and I think, I understand where you're going with that, but I think if you, let's say we wanted to get rid of Eric, whatever, he's in there for three years, I don't think the county would say no to taking your money for the next two years either.
And, and I'd like just to add to that, if we could, we could do it like this, do a three-year for the first period of time, getting you adjusted to us and us adjusted to you. And if at the end of that term, we pick it up, we could extend it to a five, go to five-year after that.
And extend it two years?
No, no.
Well, you could extend it two years to stay on the same schedule.
Two years, and then go five after that, I'm all for that, I'm saying, but I mean, you know, this is a change here, and I'm all for saving the money, I, I, I just, I have some questions on it. I don't want to lock us into something that we don't have any out, uh, we don't have any recourse other than the two years. Um, I understand, you know, you brought up a good question sort of, Rich, I mean, there's, there's good points here all the way around, it's a tough decision, really, when you think about it, I mean, um.
I agree with Rich to move along with what he was talking about, to come back with it, and if the county wants to come back with it, you know, let them come back with it.
No, and, 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 my thought is if we go with the three, and then we extend it and pick you up for two, with the, with the assumption that we can carry for five after that, five-year contracts after that.
I guess that's a discussion for two years, or maybe three years, or whatever, you know, I, I'm not saying no to that, I'm just saying, okay.
Contract extension.
Well, you know, at that point, from my perspective, once you get to that point, you're not concerned, no problem.
Right, and that's what I'm hoping to do, and I guess I'm being, being more cautious, but for every step I take forward, I try to take it back and think about what's going on, because I'm asking most of the public. But, no, let me ask you, you do East Bethel, so you're a three-year contractor?
I, I do not, that was a different.
Ten.
That's right.
Mary, Mary, the other guy on the contract, had worked with him for a few years.
And they, they don't have a problem with three-year on that?
No, they never had an issue with that. That's what he told me, so. Said he's been there twelve years, I think he's been the administrator for six, and hasn't had an issue or any kind of bill back from the county. And that's not with Eric, that is with a, a different gentleman. But I just wanted to see how the county treated that, and, uh, he said as far as he's been there, he's never had an issue with them. And if we got the hold harmless in there, to me, I don't see an issue or a risk with it.
Right.
That's just my opinion.
Right, you stated you abide by that, so, um. All right, um, so to do this.
Can you table it?
Yeah, I think you can.
Continue it? Then is a better way to go?
Motion to continue. I will make a motion to continue this.
All right, will we continue to the November twentieth meeting then? So I have a motion on the table to continue this to the November twentieth meeting, about a second?
About a second.
Mr. Scott likes a second. Barring any further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, thank you, Eric, for your time, we'll get to the, we're going to get to a conclusion, I guarantee it.
I have to refer.
But I hope you understand that the, the cautiousness we're trying to take here, so.
Yeah, so, so just want to clear, clarify, you want, we propose going out and have the three-year contract at the similar window, according to the hell clause, remember we had.
Two-year, just stay up.
Yeah, um, and then, yeah.
And then you're changing your numbers.
Sign and anything like that. Which, the, the numbers themselves in the contract won't change, because they're just billed for parcel. But, continue, you know, not an example, so.
I would just like to see if any of those back fees have been no grab, there's a whole, you know, money mails, they have to hand deliver things to go all the way across the meeting.
Yep, good idea.
Yeah, Joe, I was going to use that to the county to, to make our final decision, and based on certain things, that's.
If they don't make a proposal, it would be my understanding that their numbers would just come down on a column.
Well, it's annual, anyway, the number's there for the annual. Anyway, it's year by year, it's just a five-year deal. So the numbers are all the same, what you're seeing, you're saving around eight thousand dollars a year.
I want to see it.
That's annually. But like Rich says, put it in the packet.
Put a packet, we'll, we will make a final decision on something on November twentieth.
Hopefully, we can get that as well. Drop that off, the signed, like a signed contract with all that, and then like a spreadsheet or something with the, you know, we're. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, all right. Moving on to new business, uh, amending the personnel policy on health insurance resolution two thousand seventeen dash thirty-seven. I'm going to go to that right now. Joey, you want to talk on this one, or?
Uh, sure, I mean, I can.
Uh, sure. I mean, I can...
Or Darcy.
I can.
I see she's eager, yep.
Well, Mayor and Council, to give you a little bit of background, the city of St. Francis, um, instead of providing a health insurance policy, you know, to the employees, they've been paid six hundred and fifty dollars as a stipend, and they were supposed to get their own health insurance policy. This is not complying with the federal regulations right now. Um, and so, it started getting looked at of how can we move into providing health insurance and complying with this. Um, they did some research on it over the past year, um, and we came down to, we had a subcommittee meet of the mayor, myself, Todd Schreger, and Barb Held, um, to look at, to look at this issue. We, uh, did come down to where we could offer a health insurance policy through, um, Health Partners, through the AT group. Um, we, they have, the employees have three different options to pick from. Two of them are a healthcare savings account with insurance, and one is just an insurance policy. So, they can pick, there's different costs, a little bit of different price on them depending on what they do. Uh, we did determine that anybody hired prior to October first of two thousand seventeen, if they had healthcare coverage through, through their spouse, a group healthcare plan, or another employment, or even like the VA, they could waive it, and it would not count against us, because one of the things we need is we need seventy-five percent of employees to come on. The ones that have group health someplace else do not count against us. We went through, we did a survey, we discovered, you know, who could waive it, and then we took the cost of the other people wanting to come on, you know, those with family and stuff, and went through and determined, um, we looked at just paying two hundred dollars of family coverage, and then we even looked at paying, um, sixty-six percent of the healthcare, the family coverage, 'cause both, a lot of cities around there do pay two-thirds of insurance. We looked at the budgets, and doing it this way, it is gonna add to our budget somewhat. Um, but the other issue that we could have is being non-compliant. They could start charging us a hundred dollars a day per employee until we become compliant. So, those could add up really quickly. So, this was the best option that we could come to, keep some people that, um, at getting the six hundred and fifty taxable contribution, plus getting people who wanted the help and care, because we had several employees saying how hard it wa, or how expensive it was to get healthcare out there on the, on an individual plan. Um, the twenty thousand dollars about over all funds, we've made some cuts in the police department of eleven thousand two hundred. We, uh, made some cuts in the liquor, uh, liquor fund. John made some cuts. That was another place that generated a higher cost. And then the rest, um, is gonna be split in the general fund, and will be moved around in there and be covered. So, if you have any questions, I think I covered it all. We're just changing the personnel policy to get this in there. So, if you have any questions, I'm certainly willing to try and answer them.
Uh, well, I'll start with Joe.
I don't have any questions. I've been, uh, talking to the mayor about this a little bit and understanding what's going on. Um, I'm a little disappointed, I guess, to hear that we've been non-compliant and understanding what's going on. I think it's gonna provide better coverage for the people, and it's gonna kind of, uh, fix things to, to be the way they should be rather than the way they have been. Um, I guess that's kind of vague, but it's hard to explain. I think you explained it pretty well. Um, but with the stipend compared to the healthcare coverage and the cost of healthcare going up, um, you know, I don't, I don't see an issue with it. I'm all, I'm all for switching it.
Mr. Mayor, um, you know, I, I work for a place that provides a cafeteria contribution and similar to the six hundred and fifty dollars that the, the city contributes to healthcare. Um, I don't think I've seen a raise in seven years that healthcare's been going up. Is there any employee, um, portion that they pay here in the city, or are we just providing a hundred percent coverage for our valuable employees here in St. Francis? And, and my thing is, if employees opt out, then the six hundred and fifty dollars stipend should go away as well?
It does.
Um, you know, it says here that they can waive coverage and continue to receive the taxable contribution of six hundred and fifty dollars a month.
The grandfathered in?
They're grandfathered in.
But if there's fossil plan changes, or they changed to go to the group plan, or they leave the city, that's over, that, once they're off that, that contribution, they're done with it. There's no going back on, back and forth.
It's kinda like a phase-out deal.
Phase-out. So, because all plans are based on a year-to-year coverage. So, if there's fossil plan, maybe fine today, next year it could be cut. So, they may want to switch over to the group plan, which is, I think, behind anyway, but, but also, uh, and, and, uh, one example was that, I know, Todd, you had one person before we started this, that had a forty percent increase coming up next year on his coverage, so this looked pretty interesting to him. Um, I will...
Well, the other thing is, um, this place, um, also changed their health insurance coverages, and I don't want, we wanna make sure that we're under the same, uh, legal umbrella. Under the plan, uh, where our single-covered people get less contribution, um, married people get a different amount. Um, so these are all regulated, and I'm assuming that they're by the book, 'cause I see my check getting smaller and smaller every month. But, um, I, I'm just not understanding the, um, once we go to the group plan, is the six hundred and fifty dollars still going into their account, and then some portion of that goes towards their premiums? I'm not seeing the numbers here.
Anybody coming on group health insurance will no longer get the six fifty.
Any new hires go on the group plan?
And new hires do not get the option of the six fifty. They either have to take their health insurance, or not take, or not do it. Uh, individual coverage is going to be paid, because it worked out that the six fifty for most employees was, would cover their individual coverage, and then we went to the sixty-six percent of family coverage is being covered. So, any increases, they're gonna get an increase next year. Um, you know, the one-third of it will go to the employee, two-thirds will go to the city.
That's what I see. And that's, that's just what I wanted to, to clarify, is, you know, we're here for the residents, and, and I'm a working-class person, and I've seen my premiums going up. And I just wanted to make sure that, you know, the city's not paying all of its employees, uh, you know, above a premium.
Just to, just to state, too, we have, and I, even when I was hired, it was, when they first told me that they didn't have group health insurance, it was something to think about. And other people who are hiring, they will look at us, and we want group health insurance. And so, I think we really need to move to this, to get the employees here.
I, I know that Paul alluded that to me, and so did Kate, too, on that, so, um, you know, I, you know, and, you know, my thought behind it, by the way, before I let, turn over to Rich, is, is that, uh, it, it gives incentive for you to retain the health that you have, and incentive to hire new help. Because, you know, group health policies is what the insurance company is trying to switch over to. So, single plans are being phased out. Um, where we were, we were being overlooked before with cities with employees under fifty, uh, that is now being more scrutinized. So, that's why we're, we're not in compliance. And that's one thing we have to consider. So, uh, but this was mostly because health insurance, as I've stated before at the meetings, is mostly for catastrophic, not for hang nails or brain-brown hair stickers and like that. It's for catastrophic, just like your household insurance is. You're not gonna claim household insurance on eleven hundred dollar item when you got a thousand dollar deductible. That would be crazy, 'cause they'll make that back plus more. So, it's about catastrophic. So, uh, one of the issues we have was people that don't see it, you know, because they're healthy. But health can change on a day-to-day prep, or a day-to-day, uh, you know, deal. So, uh, to me, uh, it was more to retain the people we have that give incentive for new employees, which we are in the midst of hiring a couple, two, uh, one to public works, and two to administration, long overdue. So, um, I think that's a good idea. I'm gonna turn this over to Rich to see if he has a list here.
Well, I think it's a good idea. We struggled tonight about pulling up interest on this here and there. And this is an increase, so we're gonna have to look at this. But there comes a time, you gotta recognize, you know, we're also an employer. You know, we need to be stewardess of tax. Now, we all recognize that. But for, to provide those services, you need to have employees to go do that kind of stuff. And if you don't do this, A, we're not compliant anymore, that regulation would be, you know, here. Plus, we're in the city, if they can, you know, we're gonna get that red action. I don't think by any means we're providing a catalytic coverage for our employees, but I think we need to be stable with the times, and make ourselves, make it fair and fair to the people. Should I go over here? Should I go over there? I guess, well, the first we've got to understand, um, we pay for our fuel, go for whatever. But we are an employer of people, and the day is almost done. I think it's a good idea.
I'll have to do with all that, by the way. And like I say again, and I know that the, our, our contract year's gonna go, will be up in April, discuss this before our June budgets.
Um, what, the plan year will be actually December first to November thirtieth. Going to December instead of a January first, uh, renewal period. We can get our rates for next year more in April, so that we have them to work through our budget. If we did in January, he said they pushed them off, and we might not get them till November, so we wouldn't know those rates to set our budget. And all of a sudden, we might end up going, oh, our rates went up. So, this is...
So, the plus is we can set a budget, knowing the information we need to know to make that budget work.
Yeah.
And once again, I mean, uh, the police department has made eleven thousand two hundred dollars in cuts. Uh, John from Liquor News made forty-five hundred dollars in cuts, and we have the other money's available. So, um, it's not, you know, it, to me, and I agree completely with what you said, Rich, and Joe, too, by the way. It, this is, you know, we, we hire employees, we, we have to, uh, and health is a big deal, and, and, you know, I, I hope someday the federal government could get a handle on it, but it doesn't seem it's gonna happen overnight, so we have to take charge of it here. So, um, I think this is a good thing. So, um, any other discussion at all from anyone? And I'd like to get a motion to approve amended personnel policy rather than health insurance resolution two thousand seventeen dash thirty-seven. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Brown makes that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Brown makes that second. Barney, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And I wanna thank Darcy for all your work, and Todd, all your work on this. Thank you very much. They all did a great job. And Joe, too, by the way. I forgot that. Okay, um, let's see that for right there. Okay, now, moving on to transfer from the liquor fund to EDA, resolution two thousand seventeen dash thirty-eight. Um, Kate, you wanna explain that one, or?
I can. Mayor and Council, I have requested from the city, um, you'll see, Darcy put an agenda report in there describing the transfer that we've talked about in regards to money being transferred to the EDA for the, to acquire thirty, seven thirty-one Bridge Street, which is behind Subway. That would allow us to assemble properties for redevelopment.
Uh, I'm gonna say here, at this particular time, I don't know if anybody's looked at this building, but it's pretty, it's been run down for a long, long time. It's a safety issue, uh, for the police and fire, by the way. Um, I, I'm, with the EDA, by the way, is Economic Development Authority. And what it's doing is staging us for future development. We have developers starting to look at this city in a, in a, in a, a positive way, and we need to be, uh, ahead of the game here, be prepared. Because, uh, as I know from construction, my experience in twenty-five years of it, uh, developers come in, if they don't see something that they can move quickly on, they're gonna go to someplace else. Uh, by doing this, we take out the safety issue out of it, the police part of it, the fire part about. Uh, and safety is a big concern for me, and I know this council, too, as far as our residents and children running around and that. Um, also, uh, by doing this, we, we prevent ourselves from having a, a third party holdout, so that when that developer comes in and out, we're dealing, not dealing with a third party that says, well, I wanna get more for this, and that forces us to do an eminent domain, which I don't wanna do, I don't like doing. I don't like that type of government intrusion. But at the same time, sometimes that has to take place, so I, this prevents all that. Um, I think this is a good way to go, because, again, this building, uh, is mixed, there's some, uh, land beyond it, that's development for townhomes and commercial, too. Uh, but that's been the eyesore, the sticker, that, that's been holding things back. So, I think this is a good move here. Uh, I'm gonna turn that over to Rich. Start and see if you have anything to say about it.
I think it's a good idea. Just wanna make sure, for this price, if you plot, if you demolish the house, right?
Yep.
Should put that price, and wind up with a big amount.
Mayor and Council, correct. The two hundred and twenty-five thousand represents acquisition, um, extensive title work and demolition.
Okay, thanks. That's the only question I have. I think it's, it's something you do. Rob?
Mr. Mayor, um, I think, I, I like this redevelopment plan. I like the, the property, that we get that cleared out as soon as possible, either, um, demolish it, use it for fire training, whatever. Um...
Just don't burn the nice buildings of mine.
Yeah. Um, using the liquor fund, you know, I'm, it's a fund that, that's growing profit from, from our residents. Our residents use the liquor store. So, this is a, a way to, to valuably use those profits and put them back into the city. Um, so I'm all for this resolution in getting the city of St. Francis into a, a good redevelopment stage. Um, Kate, I appreciate the presentation earlier.
Joe?
Uh, well, we just had the EDA meeting talking about this, and then, like you say, we have a condemned building back there. It's basically a waste of space. Um, you know, by acquiring it, we can look towards the development plan, towards the future of what we were looking at. Um, you know, and I'm all for it. And you did a great job on that, too.
All right, Kate, let me ask you, how, how long has this building been around? Chief, or any one of you guys know how long this building's been in that shape? Just to let the public know.
Mayor and Council, I'm not sure of the, the shape, how long it's been, uh, as extreme as it is right now. Since I started, it has had the blue tarp, so at least two years now. Um, prior to that, it sounds like it has just continually kind of been depleting since. But it, it is a very old building. It's close to nineteen-hundred building. Um, I think it's just, it's time for a new building, so...
And it's hard to ask a developer to come in and build a nice something new around something looking at that. So, I think it's time. And like, and it's, it's the same thing, by the way, as the buildings in front of the city hall that are coming down here, hopefully by the end of this month with QuikTrip. That's a good thing. So, um, this is good. But I wanna thank you for your work on this. And Dave, too, by the way, I think your firm does some good work on this, or is in the process of it. So, um, on that, I will entertain a motion to approve the transfer from liquor fund. And I, and by the way, before I do that, I would, I agree with Rob. This is something that that money could be used for in a great way, so...
Um, well, before we do that, I'd like to also say with the liquor fund, and Rich brought it up in a work session, that I think we also need to get together and discuss what that money is definitely for. And it's not all EDA money either. It's something to discuss in the future.
Barney, any further discussion? I want to entertain a motion to approve the transfer from liquor fund to EDA, resolution two thousand seventeen dash thirty-eight. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Brown makes that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Brown makes second. Any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Moving on to item C, a new business, uh, new firefighter training manual.
Mayor and Council, uh, the proposal before you tonight is to approve, uh, new firefighter training manual that will provide some consistent, standard-based expectations for all new firefighters as they join the organization. Uh, every organization that I've ever been a part of prescribes, outlines, training for all new hires, and this is a step for us to, to implement that into our policies and procedures.
Oh, yeah. You put this together, right?
This was put together by Lieutenant Strasburg and firefighter Tim Kaiser. This was a global idea that we came up with as an officer group, by empowering those folks to, to put together a program that makes sense based on our organization. They really did a nice job, so...
And you did it on your, uh, no cost to the city?
Correct.
Wow. Yeah, dude. All right, uh, any discussion? Joe?
No.
Rob?
Dave, I wanna thank you for, um, you know, this, this presentation and the manual. Um, I come from, uh, a previous Southern firefighter organization that was, um, that did a lot of great things. And my tenure here at St. Francis was, uh, less than, you know, desirable with, um, organization and policies and procedures. I, I really like, um, what you're doing here with this. Um, there's been a lot of talk, you know, lean on, on other fire departments that are doing it right. There's been a lot of talk, you know, lean on, on other fire departments that are doing it right. I really appreciate what you do with, um, with this, I read over it, and I think if St. Francis is gonna come along, we, um, even with, you know, the firefighters that we have onboard right now, um, I think it's gonna build a, a better team, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Right?
Well, I had Rob mention, that would be one of my questions, but Rob, I want this, give them a, this previous experience with fire department, like, I look pretty impressed with this document, so thank you both for this together.
Absolutely.
So one of my questions was, I mean, I mean, every firefighter, so even if you're an existing firefighter, is there such a thing for, like today, there are these checklists for people to keep track of what they're, you know, what they're up to date on training on? And this, this looks great for a reverse, possibly something similar to the guiding document for existing firefighters.
And that's exactly what we're gonna use this as, as a roadmap. One of the things that we continue to work on and develop in the fire department, and as Joe mentioned, we're also working on our policies and procedures. When we get that done, we're gonna start working on guidelines, our training needs to model our guidelines layout for us and how we engage any type of event when we're called in an emergency. We're getting there, it's a step-by-step process. The, also, the idea or the intent with this new firefighter training manual is to, to assign every new firefighter a mentor. So we're actually getting our firefighters involved with onboarding our new firefighters, and it creates that team building as well. So many people are gonna get their hands on this over the course of time. It is going to be a guiding document for the fire department in the future.
Thanks, good job.
Thank you.
And I wanna say, 'cause I, I read that too, and I wasn't, I had to go back and say it was new, because I was thinking it could cover everybody, so I was like, that's a good thought, so, um... Okay, uh, then we need a motion to accept this as policy then, Joe, or Dave, okay? So I have a motion to accept the new firefighter training manual as policy for the, for the fire department. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Brown makes that motion, I have a second.
I'll say a second.
All right, Mr. Brown, you take the second. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, thank you, Dave, very much, thank everybody that was involved, I appreciate it.
I will, thank you.
Now, moving on, whereas you're still up, I guess, if I'd say on this one here, uh, we're moving on to, uh, hiring of firefighters. Dave?
So current staff in the fire department, if you exclude the fire chief, the assistant chief, and one member on leave right now, Councilmember Bauer, uh, that leaves us at a total staff of seventeen. Three of those are still finishing up their recruit training, they actually graduate from the academy November, November fourteenth, uh, and then they will begin to, to go through this process for firefighter training manual. The proposal before you today is to seek out eight firefighters, that would put our total line strength at twenty-five firefighters, that should give us a good balance between day and night available personnel. Um, I don't know that we'll get there, but we're gonna work real hard through the end of the year to go out and do some recruiting, um, and get people involved in the fire service that have an interest too. We did hand out approximately, uh, six to ten applications at the French Toast Breakfast. Uh, I did receive an application last week that has also been turned into the city, so we are getting some interest, um, as we go through the vetting process. The hope is that we can get our staff up to twenty-five, and that will be our target year-to-year as well for staffing.
Uh, I might open this discussion up to, uh, because you're so public, so... Um, I really like this, um, I think twenty, if you can get to twenty-five, um, you know, if we need to hire some more, or go through the hiring process even more than eight, I, I think twenty-five is, is a great number. It's, it's kinda sad that the city, um, does, you know, scrutinizes our firefighters in such a manner that, um, we can't wear two hats at once. It really saddens me, because it's something that I put a lot of years into, and I wanted to continue to give that service to St. Francis and provide, uh, city management as well. And I, and I think I can do both, um, as, you know, people continue to hear. But I, I really like you getting here and, and asking for more firefighters, because I believe that's, that's what the city needs. And, uh, it really saddens me that our residents don't, uh, come on board with, you know, the charter and, uh, and really, uh, push forward with the city to kind of open up their eyes a little bit on, uh, some stuff. But thanks a lot.
Sure. Okay, Rich?
I think it's a good idea, because Rob and you were on board for how many, have we ever been to a five?
Never.
I was gonna say, I don't, I don't ever...
I don't think, we never knew what that number was. Just flat out, what's that number?
That's been part of the challenge.
With Dean and, and Matt, there was never that blind in the sand, where do we get to?
Right.
And, and it was really sad. And that was one of the reasons why I ran for city council, is to approve the fire department and, and family feel for St. Francis, so I appreciate the hard work already.
Thank you, sir.
I absolutely agree, I think we're making a good investment, fire department leadership on down, I think this is, uh, like, good stuff, you did.
Sure.
Uh, yeah, something we talked about, I think, right before the changeover, we approved Matt to, to hire someone as well. But I'm happy with the new leadership, and, uh, you did a great job with the manual, and from what I understand with the organization that's been going on, I'd just like to thank you for it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I like, I like the direction with the new leadership with the fire department, and, uh, and it's the same thing, like I say, with the police, becoming more community-oriented thinking and that. And Todd, you're putting through the department, I like that a lot. Um, I think it's important to have a public, I've said, stated this before in other meetings, about letting the public know that the police are approachable, that's a good thing, not a bad thing. And I think strong leadership is something we lack. I know Brian went, uh, at ABC took a picture of us last time, the last meeting with, uh, Joe, the assistant chief, and asked me what the change was, the difference was, leadership is the difference. And I think we have that in place now, and looking forward to a long-term relationship there, so I think, I think this is a good move. I know, I, as, as stated by Joe here, uh, Matt was, we were talking about this before, about high business, about we never got there, so, I think, and like I, I talked to you before the meeting, um, you'll get to twenty-five if you can, reevaluate at that time and see where pieces need to be, or need not be, so...
Mayor, correct, twenty-five is gonna be our target moving forward. Whether or not we get there, there's a lot of challenges that we continue to face as, as an organization, and, and we're not, unlike any other community, that continues to struggle to recruit and retain firefighters. This has been a nationwide problem for a number of years, but we're gonna continue to work towards that as a goal.
I like that very much. So are you in any further discussion, uh, doing a motion to, for this, right? A motion for hiring of, uh, of eight new firefighters?
I'll make that motion.
All right, Mrs. Brown, you got that. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
I'll make the second, can I do that? So I support this. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, uh, meeting open to the public, second time around, do we have anybody?
No.
Oh.
Oh, nobody signed up.
I'm sorry, I didn't sign up.
That's okay.
Uh, Mike Roger, twenty-seven seventy-two hundred thirty-second, waiting. First off, I'd like to thank both of our chiefs and Paul Peiser. I know, uh, our city's gonna have a busy winter this year, and last year, they outperformed yourselves, thanks again. As far as the hockey rink, I'm kinda thinking that, you know, the fire department likes to play with water and hoses, maybe you guys couldn't... I'm a big fan of taking mon, money from one hockey and putting the other, maybe you couldn't help all the city by clubbing drinks for, something to think about, to help offset some of your costs with the pair. One of the other things, one of the other things I'm thinking too, is that the firefighters could, uh, help offset some of the costs to the city, um, like, maybe making general runs to the city at night and maybe looking for that yard that's got twelve cars parked in the backyard that, uh, or just turn it into a junk pile, and not so to speak be inspectors, but maybe reporters to the, to the inspection department, so we can help offset some of that cost also. And not only that, then you're visible to the community. Um, and then inspection fees for the rental properties, I don't know if you guys are actually doing, um, inspections with fire, the smoke, smoke detectors and all that, and whether that fee is turned back over to the fire department to help offset some of those costs that they get, that's just a thought out there. One other thing I was looking for from the city is that I am looking for a facility that, uh, I plan on starting a local fishing group, uh, for the teens up in this area. Um, anybody that knows me knows that I'm, uh, retired professional fisherman, but I wanna, it, take my talents and put them back into the community with the young kids, and not just the kids, but the parents themselves, uh, and do some on-ice events and stuff like that. I got extensive, uh, sponsors out there that'll help promote that. But I'm looking for a facility, maybe the warming house or something to that effect, the wholesome meetings at and kick that around, that's, uh...
We gotta staff it, then.
Well, you know, maybe the fire, maybe the fire department's got somebody on it that wants to join the club, it could come over. But that's something I'm looking for, it's availability, I'd be appreciative, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Anyone else, Darcy?
Nobody else.
Anybody else? All right, then moving on to, uh, reports, uh, police department quarterly report, Todd?
Uh, Mayor and Council, in your package, you'll see your third quarter report from the police department. Uh, there are just a couple of things I would like to highlight from this quarter, one being the compliance checks that the department investigator carried out on St. Francis businesses that sell tobacco and/or alcohol. These compliance checks, we typically do twice annually, and I'm very happy to report that this time around, there were no violations, um, by any St. Francis businesses. All these transactions are supervised by our investigator, and there were, there were no issues, so, um, it doesn't always happen that way, and it's certainly nice to see it when it does, so... Uh, the police department also had an increase in DWI violations in the third quarter, which not, is not typically a statistic we like to see go up, but fortunately, uh, there were officers on the roads removing these dangerous drivers. Uh, and also, many of these drivers, uh, had previous DWI convictions, uh, several DWI convictions, excuse me, which resulted in vehicle seizures. So with that, I'll answer any questions if they're...
Rich?
Yeah, I'm a little set, DWI sentence, I'm here to that kind of trouble, I don't know how you fix it, but I was just curious, when, when we do a checkpoint, that's not...
We cannot do checkpoints.
That's a state, that's a, that's some other law enforcement entity, so they're gonna do that, and they will be sort of, a lot of different places, right?
Uh, checkpoints, we cannot, we cannot do in Minnesota.
Or whatever, what do you call them, you know, checkpoints, but...
Towards zero debt details.
Extra DWI enforcement?
Yep, we'll do, uh, towards zero debt, picks a city typically monthly, and they'll, they'll provide all the resources to that, from different cities, officers from different cities, they'll come to that city and, and do DWI saturation.
I assume it's, it's pretty labor-intensive to have a greater presence just on our own to try to make sure people know that we're out there a long, long time, right, till we're out in the morning, or eight o'clock, nine o'clock, whatever. I assume you're doing about what you can do.
Pretty much, we have one night officer on, and we'll have a sergeant on until two or three in the morning. Um, them are the, typically the officers that will be enforcing DWIs. We will see some during the daytime, um, but more than likely, it's gonna happen over, overnight. Uh, and we typically have one officer on after two or three in the morning. These are the officers we're relying on to, to get these drivers removed from the roads, um, and they'll be doing a great job.
I think it is up to people, like, the right decision, it's not up to, you know, to you to make that choice, well, actually, the board is the best stuff I'd like to see. Hopefully, people will make some better decisions and, and get by and be able to... Thanks.
I just got a question about the, uh, I forgot the neighborhood. Uh, you guys set up a program for supervisors throughout the community, um, to, what do they call it?
Talking about the public watch stuff, right?
Yeah.
Oh, neighborhood watch.
Neighborhood watch. Captains, have we, have we got a pretty good handle on giving some good saturation within the, the city as far as...
The block captains' signups have slowed down since the program initiated, but we're still getting some trickling in. We're not getting a whole lot of reports from them, which is, to me, is a good thing, we're not getting a whole lot of problems reported from the neighborhood, from the neighborhoods. So typically, their, their job is to, you know, if, if they hear rumors of something going on in certain neighborhoods, maybe, maybe some crime spikes or something like that, that are going, going on in neighborhoods there, we have officers assigned to them. Certain neighborhoods, they would call our office and get clarification on them, um, maybe get some more specific details, and then they can spread that out to their blocks. And we're, we are planning on having a block captain meeting coming up this spring, where all the block captains will come in and meet one another and, um, kind of discuss maybe some trends or some, some future goals that we're gonna set here in the city for, for certain neighborhoods.
Now, they, they meet annually, right?
We are gonna start meeting annually at the police department, it's up to them as far as how often they wanna maybe organize something in their certain neighborhood. They, they can request an officer to come out and, and partake in that. Typically, a lot of that concentrates around national, I don't know.
Yeah. You know, my biggest concern is thefts and, and garages being open, you know, and we as residents have to be more diligent with, you know, the suspicious activities more around St. Francis. I'd like to see those numbers come down, and I, I can't say for sure if they've been going up, but I think more people have been talking about them on social media and stuff like that. So I'd really like to see those numbers coming down and hear some of that from the...
We do see quite a bit of thefts each quarter, and I, I could, I could break them down to clarify them a little more, not all of them thefts are theft of vehicles or, or thefts from, um, sheds or anything like that. Some of them are, uh, but also included in, in them statistics are shoplifting, um, thefts that take place within schools, uh, things like that. So all of them are compounded to form that number, but I can certainly break that down to show you more of what's going on.
I'm not looking for breaking down, I'm looking for the residents to continue to, you know, keep the word up and, and hopefully, by the more eyes that are watching the, these, those numbers to come down, we get some more, um, a better place to live here in St. Francis, you know, quit stealing from your neighbors.
Responsibility on both sides.
Yes.
Joe?
Uh, I could echo what Rob said, more awareness and communication is a good thing. As a reformed juvenile delinquent, I think the numbers will go down in the winter. Based on experience. But I'd like to thank Todd for all your work, all your communication, um, you know, we had a missing persons issue and a few other...
Yeah.
Major things, and you're very communicated with us, and for us to have that information, I didn't get any calls, but it's nice to have it, just in case somebody does call, so, thank you for that.
And, 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 you know, I just wanna emphasize again, as I mentioned before in other meetings, that, that, that feeling of community feeling towards the police is a big deal, and I know you're pushing for that, and, uh, I, I'm all for that, because like I say, you know, we don't need the, you know, as the other, as, as we felt other councils were unapproachable, we don't need the police to feel unapproachable too. The, the, the public needs to feel that you're there to, you know, and, and that works both ways, we support you, you support them, but that community feeling in a small community is a good thing, so I, I applaud you for, uh, for putting that effort forward and keeping that going, it's a big deal, so... The police force, as the council and everybody else works for the residents, and that's something that has to be maintained in their minds. And, um, thank you. I'm a little disturbed at seeing some of this domestic situations and stuff like that, but as, you know, I mean, I don't know how you can stop that, I mean, it, it starts at home and it's, you know, you can only react to it, so... I see some of these numbers, it kinda bothers me, and like you say, Rich, with DWIs, you know, there's responsibility on their end, I mean, you gotta think twice before you go out and drink and drive, you have to do that, but that's not something we can...
And some of the stuff we're putting in new services all the time, we did come up with a, we are using a new mediation service for neighborhood disputes, it could be as little as a bark and a dog that is continual, that the neighbor's calling on, and that we're continually responding out to. So we are providing mediation services for recommendations to certain citizens that we think could benefit from it, and the mediation services actually tries to set up a meeting with these people and, and resolve the issue, so... We're constantly trying to use new things and, and seeing what works and seeing what doesn't.
Good.
Do you get a lot of participation with that?
Uh, we just started it not too long ago, and I think we've already had two recommendations, so I can't, I guess I can't speak for, if, if...
I was just curious.
...the union's been set up or what the results have been.
That's two more than they had before, that's great, that's a start anyway. Thank you very much, Todd. All right, I'm gonna switch something around here, because I know we have, we have a, a closed meeting coming up here for union negotiations, and we said that, that, you know, that's state mandated.
That, privacy.
But I'm gonna, I'm gonna, at this particular point, I don't wanna hold the public here any longer than they have to, so I'm gonna move B to C and C up to B. Get the council member reports in, that way we can go to the private, and that way you don't have to stick around for us to come back and adjust the turn, that'd be ridiculous, so, um, let us do some council member reports. Um, I will start with Joe.
Uh, well, lately, I was just working with the mayor here on the, talking about the healthcare stuff, a few other things, uh, the EDA, looking at the development of the city. And I just wanna encourage everybody, tomorrow is the school vote, uh, to vote for the school board, so please exercise your voice, get out and vote tomorrow, I think the polls are open till eight. Is that right? Eight P M? So get out and vote, please.
On that, you know, the location is where? Are we gonna vote here? Vote here, okay. This is what everybody knows. Todd?
I got a question for Dave. Dave, has the date been set to send on the fire truck? I know it's a little early, but I wanna start pushing this getting.
Yep, it has not been set. We actually had a fire in Oak Grove yesterday morning and spoke with Evan Sterzle about that 'cause he's the person internally that coordinates. Sounds like there is, this, excuse me, takes place at the same time with a Kings County market event and we don't know what their timeline is yet. So that's the piece that we're waiting on.
So I wanna put out to the residents, the fire department does send on the fire truck, the date to be determined. We go out, pick up food on the fire trucks and donate it to local groups at the shelves. So that's something that I've been a part of for many, many years. It's a fun event. We get out and keep the neighbors up for a few hours with the sirens and we have a lot of fun. So with that, I did have a lot of social media conversations over the last couple of days about water rates. We are working on getting a rate study done for our residents. Whatever that means, I will work as hard as I can to get those water rates down. That's been my number one goal from getting voted into city council. So with that said, I am squeezing every penny, as most people can hear. And I will continue to squeeze every penny for our residents. That's all I have.
Rich?
First, I'd like to know, oh, you retired from fishing? That's all like you know I had to make. I don't know how you retired.
It's a lot of work that people will do. I still got it, but it's, wait, I do more returns a year and that's it.
So congratulations. You can retire from fishing. Good job. But the only thing I was gonna mention, I mean, it's probably not the right time here to deal with this, but maybe head towards next spring. I wish that you could take some pride in the property and clean this place up. Every Saturday morning, I have a little ritual where I go to the county market, pull up the gas, get my helmet, and just kinda drive around. You can drive around, it's residential places just a few blocks away from here, eleven brick cars in there. You can't tell me they have ten kids with all that evidence. I don't know what else we can do to help facilitate. I don't think it's feasible to have cars prepared up here for a weekend and everybody get their jumpers down there and they haul all the way around. People, you know, I wish I said. This part of the world sometimes gets a reputation from other parts of the world, being whatever word you wanna use. We're out in the Atlas, Vermont, and over little St. Francis.
Flat over country?
Power to kinda change some of the perceptions of us to some degree. You know, maybe when spring comes along, we take a little, maybe we'll brighten our city. Clean up some of our properties around here. One recommendation I would have, and I don't know how to facilitate that, you know, we're not, you know, we don't have the staff just to drive around and, you know, we'll provide layers instead of complaint-based by complaint. So, you know, neighbors will get up and I think it's maybe that's all right, but take the effort to, to clean this place up a little bit next spring. And if that would be a good idea. No, I've had to eat for this weekend.
We do have an ordinance for that too, but you're like you say, policing that or being a cop, that is difficult. It's more like, you know, somebody calling them with a complaint, kind of door-handed. But, you know, I've always said, before reading a mayor's handbook where it says residents working with staff, working with council to make it for a better city does really work together. It's a team effort all the way around. We can't do it all ourselves and we don't know it all. Input from the residents is a big deal and staff too. So the one thing that's changed, I think, is the mindset of the council, which is a good thing. The boundaries are open. We're looking at all things. I think the city, in my opinion, is going in the right direction. Maybe not as fast as everybody would like to see it. I've heard one thing, being a non-politician up here, government does not move as fast as I'd like it to be, but that's just one, we have to get used to that. But I wanna say something as far as the new website. I did say August at one time, then I moved it to September. The new website will be coming on this month. I've been told on the fifteenth, but I will give it at least till the end of the month. But I have to talk to people on a daily basis. It will be, they're shooting for the fifteenth next week. This is a new website. I hope you like it. We will look forward to your comments on it. It's gonna be within a two-click type of thing. Unico's gonna be on it. Our organization's gonna be on it. It's a whole new facelift to the website, more informative and more involvement by you subscribing and that. So I hope you did like it. And like I say, we're looking forward to having comments to see if we're doing something right or if we need to have something to work better. It's a work in progress. So nothing's gonna come out a hundred percent right away, but we will, it's gonna be a remarkable improvement from what we've had now and what we've had before that. Also, I wanna remind everybody again to vote. Bonding issue is tomorrow. It's important whichever way you vote to be informed. I know St. Francis, our St. Francis Post page has the information on there provided by the ISD fifteen, also on their pages. If anything, at least read it, make an informed vote. It's up to you which way it goes. We can't, we don't have any force here, any decision that we can do as a council. We're just four members, four residents like you that have a vote just like you. So it's out of our hands. So tomorrow's a big day. Please vote. As far as the weather and stuff like that, I mean, it's darker now earlier with daylight savings time, which I can't stand daylight savings time, but it's there. Watch out for children on the streets and stuff like that. I know it's hard, it's dark and that, but be careful out there. We've done some, we got some, one thing I wanna ask you, Todd, a study from Mendoc, when will we know about two thirty-fifth and Rum River? Will that be springtime, I suppose, or do we have any idea on that, Paul or anybody?
Typically, the state does not conduct the speed studies during the wintertime, so it will probably be next.
Oh, so they haven't even started the one on two thirty-fifth? Okay, so let me ask you this. The information that we have on what our data machines showed on Bridge Street, that's been turned over to Mendoc, correct?
To the county.
To the county, right, okay. And so we will, it'll be months before we hear from that or whatever?
No, I've actually spoke with the representative from the county on this topic a few weeks ago. And I guess the general consensus according to this person was just be leery about doing a formal speed study. I guess in all of her years doing this, I think she's seen the speed limit come down only once. And she's been doing it twenty seven years.
Well, they work on eighty-five percent rule, so I mean, will they, are they taking our information seriously and that? So would the next step be for them to do a study and then?
I think that would be up to the council if they wanna do an actual speed study. And I can, I can get them numbers to you and show you the results and kinda tell you how the discussion went with the result.
Because we have thirty miles an hour on the west side, but the east side has forty.
You have thirty miles an hour from the bridge west.
Right, right. And then so we wanted, we're trying to streamline it to either go one or the other or middle of the road or something. Well, if you could send us that information, that'd be great, man. Also, I was gonna say about the rate study, as Rob alluded to, we are in the midst of a rate study, which is long overdue. In my opinion, and this is my opinion, the rate study should have been done before we even started building this waste water treatment facility, which was not done. So we are in the midst of doing that. It's about a two, three month process. We're hoping that we can adjust the tiers properly and I think that's our big first step. This should have been done again a long time ago. Some of the things we're doing are catch-up and we will get to the point where we'll be ahead of the game down the road here. But that's one big thing we're doing. So a rate study is in motion by ABDO, which is our certified accountants that do our audits each year. So they're in the motion of doing that right now and I think they're gonna, I know they're gonna come back in the midway to give us a heads up. I don't know. Whatever information we can pass on, we will of course pass on in the public, let you know. But we, as Rob alluded to, I know it was Rich and Joe myself, and Jerry's not here. One of our main concern here is the rates. We want, you know, I've said it before in a joking type of way, but trifecta for me, in my opinion, is we have affordable housing, we have affordable lots. Now we need to have affordable rates. That's the key to making the city grow. And that's one thing that we are working on. You may not see it right away as far as as fast as you'd like to see it, but it is in motion. Also, QuickTrip is coming into play here. We're hoping to see those buildings, I'm hoping by, if not the end of November, December. 'Cause I know they're very serious about taking those buildings down. So those structures will be down and, but QuickTrip is coming. So it's a big deal here. I think they'll do well here. It's a good thing to see. If anything, it'll be nice to look at those old dilapidated buildings. That'll be a good thing. So on that. Why not?
Chief, I had some residents complain on Coffee Street that the speed meter is up, but they haven't seen it fly or shit in a while. I don't know if it's batteries or.
It's a battery issue and I change them as much as I can. I'm the one that makes myself responsible for that. And sometimes the sign is collecting data, but it's not, it's not displaying, so.
But it's always collecting data.
Unless the batteries are dead.
Unless the battery.
Assuming they are now and I will get the change.
Do we, do you, how many batteries do you, I mean, 'cause I know the batteries last a long.
Each sign takes two batteries. We have two sets of batteries. And depending on how the sign's operating, it could last a couple of days, it could last a week. It's just, if they're displaying more things, it's gonna drain the battery faster.
And of course, the cold weather affects it too.
Cold weather affects it as well.
These, these signs, they're set at, set in posts, right? Is there a possibility for cost savings to get those little solar panels and place them on there? Or are the batteries required to operate that device? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if this particular sign manufacturer makes a solar adapter for that. I haven't seen.
I wonder if they can retrofit the solar.
Yeah, and you'd see it every once in a while on certain signs, there'll be a little solar panel up there to, you know, get that free power and keep those things up and running, so.
Either that or we should buy more batteries. It's one downside of batteries, but.
Those are rechargeable?
Those are.
That's it, sorry?
No, I, and you know, the fact that it came from the forfeiture fund, I applaud the police for that. That you're on top of that right away with two data machines and radar gun, I think is great. On that, you know, what are the comments? I'm going to close this part of the meeting. I've got something to read here so I can read this exactly. So in a few minutes, I'm gonna close the meeting under Minnesota Statute, Section thirteen D point zero three subdivision one. I don't know all this other stuff, but the city council's ability to move into a closed meeting to the governing body of a city made by a majority vote in a public meeting decide to hold a closed meeting to consider strategy for labor negotiations, including negotiation strategies or developments or discussion and review of labor negotiation proposals. I'm not gonna read all about this. We have to go into a closed meeting for labor negotiations. I've said that through our campaign that that's about the only time we'd ever do that. We will do that at this particular time. And do I have to say the time? Do I need a motion? Okay. A plan of motion to move into a closed meeting at eight oh two. They're motion. Mr. Surtell makes that motion. I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Surtell makes the motion. Second, other? How many would say aye?
Aye.
Thank you to the public, by the way.